Good evening. Thank you for joining us at the Board of Commissioners meeting, August 1st, 2013, at 7:00 PM. The first order of business is a call to order. If those would join us in a prayer and a pledge.
Please bow. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've created for us. Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Father, we ask that you would guide these many women as they undertake the city's business. Father, that their decisions will be in the best interest of the citizens. Father, we ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Next item is the approval of the agenda.
Who approves?
I do have a request for a deferment of 7B. What are the wishes of the board?
Okay by me.
Would there be any other deferring or additions that haven't been stated? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is citizens' comments.
Mayor, there are no citizens' comments tonight.
Thank you, sir. And item number four is awards and recognitions. And I believe I have the distinct honor this evening to recognize some new Fairview Police Officers. Chief Harris, would you like to share anything before I ask for the swearing in and the oath?
Yes, I'd just like to introduce the three new officers, newest officers. Ginger Fleischer, Flasher, Cody Knight, and Chase Greer. And...
Good evening. I think I've met each one of you except Mr. Greer. Welcome aboard. I have a Fairview Police Officer oath of office, and it will have a place where you'll state your name, but I will ask that you repeat. Says, "I," state your name. If you will raise your right hand.
Aye.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
"I will never betray my badge or the public trust."
"I will never betray my badge or the public trust."
"I will protect and serve every citizen."
"I will protect and serve every citizen."
"Without prejudice or malice."
"Without prejudice or malice."
"I will always have the courage."
"I will always have courage."
"To hold myself to a higher standard."
"To hold myself to a higher standard."
"And be accountable for my actions."
"And be accountable for my actions."
"I will uphold all federal, state, and local laws."
"I will uphold all federal, state, and local laws."
"And serve the city of Fairview."
"And serve the city of Fairview."
"And the Fairview Police Department to the best of my ability."
"And the Fairview Police Department to the best of my ability."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Thank you very much. I honor the honor of this. Thank you. Honored to welcome y'all to the police force.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Are there any other awards or recognitions from the board this evening? Any from the staff?
There are no staff recognitions, ma'am.
Item number five on the agenda is public announcements. I would like to make a shout out for the Fairview Community Action Partnership. Back to School Bash, that'll be held Saturday at the Fairview High School. That is an opportunity for anyone that would like to get more information about the school, as well as pick up free school supplies, being provided by many, many heartfelt people. And that event will take place from 10 to 12? Did I say the time right?
Yes.
10 to 12. I wanted to make sure it wasn't 9 to 12. That event will take place 10 to 12 at Fairview High School, and they will be handing out backpacks and school supplies until they run out. So please join us. Any other public announcements?
Yes, Mayor, just want to remind everyone that school does start on Friday, August 9th. So be aware of what's going on out there. Be a lot of people moving around, so just bear with us.
Thank you. Item number six is approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the June 26, 2013, public hearing regarding the budget. What are the wishes of the board?
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6B is the minutes for the June 26 special call Board of Commission meeting regarding the budget.
Move to approve.
We have an approval and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 6C is the minutes for the June 26, 2013, public hearing regarding the tax rate.
Move to approve.
First, second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6D, the minutes for the June 26 special call Board of Commissions meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item seven is O Business 7A, discuss and undertake action on the Fairview City projects. Project Manager Kevin Halsinger.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
I'm sorry. Before Kevin starts, could... We have just a brief discussion on the format here. He does a really good job with this, and I appreciate the information, but a lot of the information, as I look back through my notes, is the same information for those projects that happen to be in a particular holding pattern or stuff. Could we possibly go to like the first meeting of the month, which would be this one? Him go completely through everything, but in subsequent meetings in the month, if there's been no change, to just say, "No change," and kind of keep it moving?
I would agree that any updates are necessary, but I would agree that the redundancy of, "I said this, this, and this," and saying it secondly is of no use. So I would agree of updates.
I think that's okay with Commissioner Sutton and Commissioner Johnson.
Even, even month to month?
Well, I can bring the significant changes based on the meeting and the importance of that, that information.
And then you would be reporting on the first meeting, and that way you know you'd be prepared for that. I think that's very well said.
I'm always prepared, but yeah.
It also could be an email before the meeting to keep us abreast and/or something in the packet.
That'd be all right, too, if he was able to do that. But I just, I just noticed in my notes, and in the minutes, it's just a number of these items, they just don't change because of the length of time, and especially those that are dealing with the state.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we had that meeting with Representative Durham, and it's quite obvious that the state has got us boxed in on two, three items, so.
Okay. And I believe just to add note to that would be anything that we have inquiry over or questions that we should be communicating. That way, we, we don't let a month or two go by, and we don't know exactly what status is, if there's something not on the list.
Perfect. Works for me.
Okay. Thank you.
So then the first project that we'd be discussing this evening would be Bowie Lake Road. We got roughly 1,927-foot sidewalk now installed all the way into the park. They've put down the binder course for the roadway expansion, and we should be starting the actual paving shortly. Looking to be meeting that substantial completion date of the 5th. The next item on the list that has changed is Keith and I met with one of the people that are going to provide a quote for the Forest Street program, and once we have a quote and verify the insurance, we'll assess the, basically the quotes, and pick a person to go with on those projects. Like Commissioner Bissell said, we had a pretty good meeting with State Representative Durham, and we discussed all the MPO-type projects, safe routes to schools and those things. So hopefully, we can make some headway with his, with his assistant. The next thing that we have left is Windstream City Networking. My building's up and running. We just need to get them to bring the stuff into the building, and we can finish up the project. And then the last thing is the Veteran Memorial Park. Working on getting the flagpoles on order, and we'll get those installed and finish up the memorial area, and we should be close to wrapping that up in the next couple of weeks.
I'd have a question about the city paving. Many months ago, you had said you were identifying and being able to bring a road suggestion of overlay, and then you addressed about King Road and all. Could you give me any insight about the city paving?
I brought those specific roads the city manager and I and Randy Beck addressed, and then we, we talked about paving King Road, and then at the last meeting, I brought up getting a bid so that we can procure on a tonnage. And then, as a group collectively, collectively, we can address the roads, and then we know whether it's a mile, how much it's going to cost to pave, mill, and everything, and we can do that on a case-by-case basis, under the recommendation of the city staff.
Okay. All right. And I'm going to address city manager Hyatt. The city survey, I believe there's some updates on that, and I believe that Monday the park board's...
Correct.
Okay.
What we've got, we've, the marketing intern we've got has helped us along with Jenny and Keith and myself, and I've given it to the mayor to review because she's also chair of the park board, and I wanted somebody else to look at that. But we've got a, a short survey that's going to be put out on Survey Monkey once the park board looks at it and we're ready to go with it and keep it out there for as long... Usually typically, you try not to leave it out there too long because it can get... People just get kind of coming back and coming back, and you don't get a lot of good information. But we've got some, some, some general information about our park system. We've been real careful to make sure that they, everyone understands it's not about Bowie Park, it's about Evergreen Lake, it's about Elrod property, it's about other park-related things in the city and what they'd like to see. So that should be up and running very soon.
And I'm going to visit the welcome sign. You were going to hopefully get an easement. Where is the status on that?
Still working with the city attorney on procuring the information about the easement till we can get the agreement in place.
Okay. Super. Any comments or questions of the board?
Update on the historical marker. I know there was discussion.
Historical marker. From what I've been able to trace back through my department, we were held off on installing the historical marker. I have located the historical marker. We actually have the sign and the post. If somebody, I've, I've talked with the city manager, if somebody would like to give us the exact location of the historical marker, we'll have it up in two, two days. I just need to know where that needs to go. It's going to got to be somewhere between the post office and the Triangle School, but I would assume it needs to be near the road, like you could pull off the highway and read a historical marker and then get back on the highway, like most are. Or pull off a road, like the one down at Horn Tavern. You can pull off by the old water plant there, you can read it, and then pull back on the road.
This is the one from the post office, right?
The post office, yeah.
That'd be my suggestion.
Dr. Rice, where would it, where does it need to go, sir?
I think it's between the school and the post office and not at the road, so that when people were visiting the site and walking the sidewalk between the two buildings, they would see it.
Yeah.
It would be between the post office and the school before you get to the swell, which is the drainage area.
Sounds good to me.
So within five feet, if you're looking at the post office to the left?
Something like that.
Towards the front? Towards the front right, front left corner, within five feet?
There are two sides to the marker.
The magic in that.
We have had the late having it put up, but apparently we've decided to do so right now, so that's fine until the Triangle is finished at that occasion, but go ahead and put it up. It's two-sided, obviously, but the writing about the post office toward the post office, you know, that's complicated.
Well, I guess what I'd like to do then is we can get out there with a, we'll put a white stake out there where we anticipate on putting it, get him to bless it, and then we can have it, we'll put it in one day.
I'm sure he could go out there. We could meet him out there in the morning.
Okay. Well, I'll be in the middle of...
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Halsinger?
Yeah, just see me after the meeting. I'll be there right after the meeting or whatever.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are we going to be discussing, excuse me, are we going to be discussing the Triangle School project in your session?
I don't have any update on it.
Where are we at, and what are we waiting on against?
Waiting on the proposals from those true companies that have complaints.
Did we put a deadline on that?
I did not. I just sent home information.
Been a reasonable period of time already?
Uh, it's been a week, two weeks. I'll house my name on the mark.
That'd be great, just so we can keep, keep it moving in the right direction so we can get it done.
Okay. Any other comments about projects? Could be none. We'll move on. New Business A, discuss and undertake action on resolution number 10-13. Vice Mayor.
Resolution number 10-13 is a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on amending the approved master development plan for the Fairview Historic Village, as shown on Williamson County Tax Map 69, parcel 62, zoned HOD, City of Fairview, Tennessee, owner 3.54 acres. Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Is there anything that you would like to add to that, Mr. Levorn, at all comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 8B is discuss and take action on recommendation 2013-7 from the Planning Commission. Director Levorn.
The planning commission voted on July 9th to send the recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. First one is a rezoning application for property located at 515 Highway 96 North to be rezoned from RS 40 to R 20. It was a unanimous decision to send that recommendation for approval. Action would be to, if y'all want to proceed forward, is to ask the city attorney to prepare those documents.
Will they be having a new driveway?
They will have to if they want to build another residence there.
So they'll be building right in front of that house, just in the middle of the yard?
I really don't know yet because I haven't seen the plat for the subdivision if, if the rezoning goes through, but TDOT is going to have to issue them a permit for another driveway because our zoning will not allow them to have another residence off that easement.
Is that a requirement before that they get that, or it's just up to them if they don't get it, it doesn't matter?
Maybe a requirement, maybe not.
Well, the, the requirement is, was made, is made by, really by the zoning orders because they can't use that easement for another, another dwelling.
So it would come into no building permit?
So we will not issue a building permit unless they get another access off the highway.
And they're worth it.
And I was just curious how that unfolded, so I appreciate you explaining that. Okay?
Y'all want the city attorney to prepare those documents?
What are the wishes of the board?
Move forward.
Yes.
Do you need that in a motion?
Yes, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
First and second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second?
Any opposed? Sorry. You have something else?
The second item was a recommendation from the Planning Commission asking the Board of Commissioners to expand the town center area to include the south side of Fairview Boulevard in the overlay to increase the, the town center to, to be more of a town center field, that, that side of the highway would, would have the same design standards as the town center does. So when you're coming through Fairview on Highway Boulevard, on Highway 100, one side you don't see design one way, and on the other side, you see another design sort of. It kind of is conducive with the whole area there. And I believe the maps that you were sent in the email packet, you can probably tell a little bit better than, than the ones that were in the packet. The highlighted areas that show the current town center district and then the proposed town center district would be in the, in the red. You got the big map?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Am I on the right page?
Yes.
Okay. I thought so.
So the recommendation from the Planning Commission was to amend the land use map to expand town center, but we can't do that unless the Board of Commissioners want to place the town center overlay on that area, which would take some money expenditure to go out and have that area surveyed, so we'd know the boundary of the area to put that overlay over.
Do you have an estimated cost on that?
I haven't. I just brought it to see if y'all wanted to move forward with that. If y'all do, then I can call some surveyors and get some quotes on what it costs to do that.
What are the wishes of the board or comments or questions?
Which, which map was recommended?
I, I've just done two maps because of the way that the Planning Commission, the motion was, was to allow me to draw the map for the area. So I gave you two different, two different maps that shows two different areas, and one area was left out and kind of just went with the property lines around the boundary. That, that, the map that shows the, the biggest portion includes part of the Kingwood subdivision, which is already zoned as a, as a planned unit development. And that's the reason why it was left out of the, out of the, out of the first map and included on the second map, just because it would be conducive to the town center overlay because it would allow for apartments or condos or townhomes the way it's already zoned.
How, how does this affect the folks that are already there and in business?
Uh, the folks that's already there, it doesn't affect them in any way. It only affects properties when, when they're sold and developed from what is already there.
Because a lot of that land is just basically undeveloped. It's just...
Yes, sir. Most of it, most of the area is undeveloped. The, the developed area is mostly just along Highway 100, Fairview Boulevard, and a little bit along Chester Road.
And, and just visually looking at it, to me, isn't, isn't the area we are proposing to be part of the overlay, the new overlay, or added overlay, excuse me, isn't it about twice as big as what we already have?
Uh, I haven't measured it. If y'all want, wanted to do that and come back to the next meeting and defer this to the next meeting, I can get the current acreage and then get the expanded acreage and...
I'd, I'd like to know that, and I'd like to just have a, just a ballpark on the cost of what it would cost to do this.
I believe the concept is, is very well projected, and I think it's a good thought, and I do agree that us talking more about it, but having a understanding of what we would be expended for that and making sure that it's a wise move, it's, I think it's proactive, and I think it's very well thought out because the downtown Fairview is what I believe we all know is a future benefit. So I agree with Commissioner Bissell of getting some more information and maybe having a ballpark.
Okay. If you wanted to...
Because if you showed this, I don't know who your surveyor is, but if you showed this to a surveyor and said, "This is the area or approximate area, could you give me a ballpark?" They may say that could cost X hours and it's X of money. I mean, it'd make a difference. Like when we were going to change the overlay, you brought to us some information, and it was not cost prohibited for what we were trying to accomplish, and it just began to be not wise.
Yeah.
If you want to defer that, then at the next meeting, I'll, I'll have a presentation for you.
Motion to defer.
Any discussion?
This doesn't have any effect on the upcoming Planning Commission agenda item, does it?
What's that?
This won't affect anything that's possibly wanting to be built across the street right now?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number 8C, discuss and or take action on audit engagement letter with Patterson, Hardy, and Bellantyne CFO.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the contract, so to speak, with the auditors that we approved at the proposal time. They are going to start next week, and we'll be here for two weeks. They estimate that the report will be available no later than the end of September, and they are still saying their rate is the $9,000 that they had proposed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. City manager, items for discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a lot going on in Fairview, and there, there will be a lot more going on in Fairview as the days go ahead, and I'm going to mention the 10th anniversary of Bowie Nature Center next Saturday, a celebration. I'm sure Keith might have some more words here in a few minutes, but just want to invite everyone to come out to, to see that, and just a reminder about school starting up. That's all.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Mayor, Commissioners, I believe you have copied my report. Planning Department, we reviewed a final subdivision plat for phase one and two of Deer Valley Downs, a subdivision over on Crow Cut. First two phases, I believe, is 25 building sites. Planning Commission approved their preliminary development plan last month. Staff will recommend approval of, of the final plat at the next meeting. We reviewed a preliminary site plan for the Taco Bell, or a, it's supposed to be a conceptual. I'll put preliminary in my report, but it's a conceptual site plan for the Taco Bell and a preliminary site plan for the Fast-Paced Medical Clinic. Building permit department issued three building permits for the month of July, down from the previous months. No new single-family construction for this, uh, the month of July. We issued 48 electrical permits. Complaint department received six complaints. We forwarded those to the appropriate department for resolution. We filled out 21 calls for service-related orders, forwarded those to the Department for Department for work to be completed. Did not get a report from a building inspector. He's on vacation this week, so that's left out of the report this month. Code's violation department received 10 complaints for the month of July. There were 32 violation letters sent out, five letters, failure to comply, and no citations written.
Thank you.
Just one question. Where, where is the $25 permit paid for the law of 2016? Where's it figured out at?
It would just come under the, all, all the permits, which would be considered building permit.
I know we're going to have a discussion about that for the group plan, but I'm just curious if that was a separate item or not.
Well, actually, it'd be on the agenda for y'all's Board of Commissioners meeting on the 15th.
Thanks. The Taco Bell done, is that, you said that was supposed to be conceptual instead of preliminary?
Supposed to be conceptual. I just had it in the report as...
Have they, have they given you a target start date?
They have not, but from my understanding, once they get through the conceptual, for the next month's middle, they're going to submit the preliminary and the final and the, and the design. So with them wanting to do that, sounds like they want to get on it pretty quick.
Yes, sir.
And the same thing with the fast pace. And in the report, I've got it as preliminary is also conceptual, but they want to do the same thing. They want to be under construction by the end of September.
Okay. Just for, well, with the fast pace, is this going to be over where the high five figures is that?
Yes, sir.
Have you had any reports, and would you be privy if there was a, any delays in the projection of Walmart's opening? the projection of Walmart's opening?
I haven't heard an end date, I guess, over the last month or so. Didn't know that there was at least two months, pushed back two months from the original date, which puts them to the end of November, 1st of December, for grand opening. I haven't been down there to inquire lately.
Could you check on that? I was shared with one of the pieces of the general contracting that they're looking at the end of January, and it would just be interesting if they already have that projection in mind, that we're definitely making sure we're not making any moves and steps ahead of them.
Well, of course, when they first came in, was talking to us, once they get all the footings poured, and they start going vertical, they say they can get buildings built within six months, so.
But they're vertical.
The western wall is probably 30 feet high.
Yeah, they're building up.
We were told earlier this week that they were about three weeks behind, and that they thought they could catch that back up now with good weather, and if they had to on good weather days, they would be, they would go 24 hours a day work if they needed to. They want to be open for the Christmas season.
I would think that was high motivation.
So, the way they spoke, they still think the original October 30th day is possible.
Okay. Any other?
It is really progressing, and there's a couple places, I don't know if the general public can get to or not, but on the backside of Mr. Lampkin's property, it overlooks that. You can really tell the patties down the walls are coming up quickly. Just in a matter of a few days, two 30-foot walls are put up remaining, so if you go by your perception, I think it won't take a month.
Okay. Complete? Other staff reports?
Mayor, we took 684 calls last month. We had 16 non-injury accidents, five injury accidents, and one fatality last month. And I would like to let y'all know, the last officer you swore in graduates tomorrow from the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy, so we will be going to his graduation. So he'll be back on the road.
Great, thank you.
Questions?
Chief, I've got a question for you. The last two fatalities, were they, did it involve a left-hand turn off Highway 100?
No.
You have the one up?
Well, one fatality was on Lake Road. The other fatality was on 100, and-
Well, let me back up and say, serious accidents, because the old one came out of Brush Creek, hit that car in half.
Yes, but nobody got in that one.
Thank goodness.
It was a bad wreck.
I just emphasize that when we start talking about widening roads and dangerous intersections with T-.
That is a bad intersection. It's because it's, it's a curve and-
I know that's where a lot of their judgment says, sadly enough, how many people have died, well, that's enough, we'll go ahead and widen the road.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why, am I right?
Right.
That's the mentality they have, so.
That's what they ask on the red light at Chester.
What about the cars? Any discussion about the cars?
The-
The ones that were originally were asked for. I've been looking at some of the paperwork, and I don't know whether you had postponed this, was this for some advanced information?
Well, I do understand that, I believe Commissioner Carroll would like a cutoff, but the Board would have to set that. And we did that, I would recommend 100,000 miles, but the Board would have to set that.
That's actually higher than TML's recommendation, isn't it?
Yes. But 100,000 miles is not actual what's on the motor. You could probably, 175 to 200, because they sit a lot, run a lot, and it's fast slow, fast slow, so.
I've got just a couple of, I'll make this brief, because I know we're on Carriage Ford. I've got a couple of figures here in front of me that was, I think, proposed back in April, was when some of it was done, and at that time, there was 2,285,000 miles on our vehicle. Jack, it's 7,000 miles. Going into that, we now have almost a quarter billion miles on the vehicles that we have, ranging from a high of 165,000, 164,000, 157,000, 151,000. We've got 11 vehicles over what the recommendation is, which is all of them over 120,000 miles. My biggest question about what we've decided on budgetary, we have to have the money to pay for them, I understand that, is safety of what we have. So just keep that in mind. Do you have any other, if Mike can get us through down there, please get it to us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to footnote that, because as he said, it's not a surprise that they're over what is suggested mileage. So in that question of when they became that mileage to now, we haven't talked about this in three years, or two years. You brought cars out of the drug fund, but as far as a maintenance and an understanding of a replacement plan, and I believe when that was delivered, we did talk, and I agree, more information is needed. To make these conversations and decisions, it's going to be where we see the whole picture, because there is a slice of want and need that we may have to separate because of budgetary issues, but there is a conversation that I would like to see, a fleet replacement plan of an understanding of the fleet, the fleet status. And I believe, Ms. Crystal, if you can correct me, at some point, we laid out every vehicle that the city owned, and its age, and its miles. So I know that's already been created, because we talked about this, and I believe it was created. Was it every vehicle? Or was it?
I don't have that list. It may be Kevin. My list is the VIN numbers and the age, or the make and model of the cars for the emissions testing, but-
Maybe this is what I'm speaking of, that revisiting this-
Never replace vehicles, yes.
Revisiting this as part of the conversation is very important, thank you, because that allows us to see the picture. You know, just the picture being seen, I believe, is very valuable, and then explaining to the citizens as they ask questions, because, you know, they just need explanation. If they see the safety need, I believe everybody would be in agreeance that we need to address that for our people. But the fleet stats, when you project that they should have been replaced, or need to be replaced, and then the type of vehicles that you are needing to replace, because I believe when someone asked, are they cars or SUVs, you stated SUVs.
SUVs, yes.
So in just a layman's statement, I would say, okay, if we need a vehicle to replace a vehicle, are there options that we can replace it without the expenditures being in a vehicle that maybe is bigger than what-
Right.
Bigger or more than what we need for the purpose of one on the side of the road being replaced.
I understand, and the reason why with these SUVs, is they are six cylinders. They will save gas better than the cars that we have, because they're V8s. Plus, two years ago, maybe it was three years ago, when we had the snow, I had to transport officers to calls, because their cars would not make it when our roads get, and these are all-wheel drive, so we would not have that issue anymore.
I think that's part of the discussion as well. So I bring that up, because the sheet of paper of this is not enough to move forward, in my opinion. Adding the paper and having a discussion, I believe, and I, you know, I feel like at the workshop on the 16th, that could be something discussed, and, you know, at this point, we're looking at the safety for the citizens, and what can the city of Fairview do to accomplish the need.
Just to add to that, just from a request along those lines, I'd like to make sure, I've heard estimates up to 30,000, I believe it's gonna be much higher than that, would have to be added to the maintenance budget, have to be added to the maintenance budget from 50,000, if we don't do something with these, a large part of the-
Well, they're breaking, and they are breaking down.
Oh, yeah. So, just to, I'd like to see a forecast on that.
It's hard to forecast, I mean, I can get Kevin and Randy, but, I mean, like I say, you can have one vehicle that runs forever and never gives you any problem, and then you got one that just breaks down all the time. And it's what happens when they break down, what it costs to fix. You can have a vehicle that you can repair, that Randy can repair for a couple hundred dollars, and then you have something that you have to have repaired that's gonna cost $3,000 or $4,000, so.
I don't doubt that, but-
Yeah.
I know the older they get, the more you have to fix them.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up. Gave a little discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, that's why I came up next. I'm gonna be meeting with another municipality about their fleet maintenance program, and see if I can get some cues on how they've done theirs. I know we've talked about mileages and everything else, but hopefully in the next week or so, I'd like to get over to another place and see exactly how they do it.
Well, the Franklin city manager and the Brentwood city manager, I believe, that's a requirement whenever they're asked for anything, that they have a plan of what, where, and how, because it's sent out in budget time, and we were doing it outside of budget, and I know you brought it up prior, but it's something that the department head requesting has to have a plan, and I, I don't know where I put it, oh, I have this. We were given in March a five-year plan from the codes department, and I'm not kinda waving his flag, but I believe that that's all we're asking for, is what's your plan in the police department with the vehicles for the city? Hopefully, you'll be here forever, but if you're not, how is someone going to follow what the plan was? And of course, budgetary is always gonna make notes of whether that's feasible or not feasible. But, you know, I believe the strategic plan that we've discussed for each department, we're working on a park strategic, we have a code strategic, and I believe the community service, police, and fire would be something that the city manager, you know, may be able to draw along with TML's support, or be able to focus, because, I mean, that way you don't have to come blank asking, you have a plan, and it's understood when we process budget that it's feasible or not feasible.
Well, one of the municipalities I'm talking about is actually Brentwood. I'm gonna meet with Assistant Chief Walsh. He's actually the one that oversees the fleet maintenance program, so I need to get down there and meet with him, and then talk to their person that actually does fleet. A lot of their stuff, they do send out to the dealership based on warranty, but I will plan on doing that. As far as community services and strategic plan, I'm just shy of a year, so I'm still building on the strategy, and as soon as I get a little more information, I'll have that for y'all. The only thing else I have to add is, just be careful out there on the roads, we're out there doing the rideaway cutting, and we'll be taking up some ditch work again, so just watch out for my guys, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. I owe you for two months, 55 calls in the month of June, and 66 in the month of July. Both months have been very busy. Answer to your question on the fatality on the car that got cut in half, both of those were improper lane usage, and that makes your case for widening the road solid. Also, the fire a week ago Saturday, I want to thank all the city people for coming out to help, especially Public Works. We had some runoff that at the time, we thought was hazardous, turned out it wasn't, for building our little dams for us and things like that. We had a lot of water and stuff like that, but after a few hours, you have to start putting calories back in these guys, and lo and behold, about noon, city manager shows up with large pizzas. It was great, so couldn't have done it without the teamwork.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chief, I'd like to make a recommendation today. We sent out letters of appreciation to all these different departments, because this wasn't like they sent one truck.
Oh, I know.
Those people were coming for two hours. Seven o'clock, they were coming, nine o'clock, I was still passing, coming through Franklin from everywhere, so they put forth a great effort, and they were there for several days.
I emailed all the chiefs Monday morning, and I can send them hard copy letters if you want.
It's just, I think, whatever we need to do to make sure that they're recognized.
I believe to the city manager, or to, like you say, the department, a handwritten thank you card, if you have Delaina or someone do that and get the addresses, I think that would be an extra touch, and they did come.
Without a doubt.
They came till they were told to turn around.
Will do.
Thank you.
As Andrew stated, we have a nature center 10th anniversary open house celebration on Saturday, August 10th, starting at 10 to 3 p.m. Everyone's welcome. And summer camps are over, and we're starting our fall programming, so girls are working pretty hard, getting pretty full schedule going.
Okay, great.
I'm gonna take that to the money box as last month.
I can't remember. I'll get that to you.
Thank you. Because I still see a lot of cars just out of county, not county, not city, and I want everybody to enjoy it, but that's something I'd like to look, move forward with in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any other staff comments this evening? City attorney, comments?
Mayor, I have nothing to offer at this time, thank you.
Communication from the Commissioners. Commissioner Busell?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a request, and then a personal note I'd like to share, that the request is, before we adjourn, could we just go over our calendar for the month? I've got a couple of dates I wrote down on my calendar, and I'm not sure I got them right, of meetings that are workshops that we're supposed to have, that sort of thing. So if we could just do that. The second thing is, all the Bussells would like to thank those in the community that helped us find Daisy. Daisy is six-pound Yorkie, and she got away, was a week ago Sunday, and was gone for five days, and the response from the community was remarkable. It made me feel very proud to be a member of this community. I want to especially thank Tina and Jeff Daniel, Tammy and Tony Heathcock. We were on the coast when we got the call, and they immediately jumped in, and then, of course, a word of thanks to Renee Jobe and her daughter, I believe Ashley is her name. They actually found Daisy and returned her, and she's doing great, and she's real quick to go outside the house, come right back, but we really appreciate, there were hundreds of people that sent us notes that said they would just drive through the area and look on their way to work and stuff like that, and it made us very proud to be part of this community, and I think it's, I think it's pretty indicative of the kind of folks that live here, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Sutton?
I can verify that I sent our partner coming out of the woods behind the Mexican restaurant in Whistler, Colorado, I didn't know who, I was, I hear it was like Daisy and Daisy.
Well, Keith and Pandrea live across the street from us, and I didn't mention them, I mean, they're all the time doing things, they're just great neighbors and great people, and I think everybody knows that, so.
Commissioner Sutton?
I just want to tell you about, I appreciate the challenges to do. I've had several phone calls this week, I had two today, and Kevin was commenting on the job he did. This was somebody started off with a problem, and the comment was, it was very professional and courteous, and responding to it, and I checked on it, and it was handled right away. That's what I'd like to see, for everybody, for the folks in the city, to be a good job.
Mr. Johnson?
Not to the mayor.
Okay. And I don't have anything at this time. I ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
And I'd like to call for executive session.
The calendar, can we do that?
Can we do that in session?
Yeah, we can do that, that's fine. We just, I just want to make sure I have the page right.
Good evening.
Thank you. Are we gonna meet in here, or are we gonna go to the conference room?